Councilmember Lamont?
Here.
Councilmember Peak?
Here.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Here.
Mayor Potem Wagner?
Here.
Mayor Mullin?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Steve Euring, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you, Steve. Could I get a report on the closed session?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's regular meeting convened at 6:00, at which time we recessed to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The council discussed the item that's listed on the posted agenda and tonight took no reportable action. In addition to that, I'd like to remind the mayor that we have Councilmember Peak remotely teleconferencing, so that means that all votes tonight will be by roll call, and Heather and I will be here to remind you.
Thank you for that reminder and for future reminders. Could I get approval of the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Mullin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Could I get a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on February 15, 2018, with the amended agenda posted on February 23, 2018.
Thank you. There are no ceremonial presentations. Do I have some comments from the public? I do. Hang on a sec.
Did you have a...
He's covering up for 6A.
Oh.
Okay, our first speaker will be Jennifer Dina Cola, followed by Sarah Ryan, followed by Steve Euring.
Want to go first?
Sure.
Ours is all together.
Okay, no problem.
Good evening, council. I thought I'd start you out this evening with some good news. If you remember, a while back, the high school and the Measure BB Committee, Advisory Committee, recommended putting a parking lot up on the ridgeline over the football field. And as I recall, the plan was to light it up with like seventeen poles, about twenty, two-hundred-and-fifty-watt lights that were going to make it look like Times Square on New Year's Eve. And the people in Malibu Park were not happy with that, and the Malibu Community Alliance, of which I'm a board member, listened to them, and we figured there had to be a better way. So we went and negotiated with the school district, came up with a better lighting plan that they agreed to, and we've been in the process of implementing that. We've got half of it done. The concept of the plan was lighting where you need it, when you need it, and nothing more. And so the idea would be the parking lot would be dark unless there was activity going on it. There were motion sensors to light stuff up and make it work. We got half of that done. The other implementation process has not been going that well, and what was happening is the lights were being left on all night long. And we got some complaints. I think you guys heard from Terry Lukoff. We got a number of calls. Thankfully, we met with the school district. They met us at the parking lot. We did a walk around. They agreed with us. So what they've decided to do is turn off all the lights that are not yet functioning as they're supposed to until we get them all fixed. So basically, what's going to happen, the parking lot will remain dark until we get all the lights fixed up and working correctly. So we'll be preserving the dark skies of the Malibu Park community. And I guess the good news is we think we'll get this done prior to the time the dark sky ordinance comes before the Planning Commission and the city council, and hopefully, we'll have an example. We can show everybody of what a good dark sky program can do to preserve Malibu's dark skies, and I think that's good news. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Steve. We like good news here. So the first speaker that I have is Sarah Ryan, and Sarah will be followed by... Well, who would you like to go first? We have a group here together. Okay, Mindy Peterson first? All right, Mindy, you're up.
Thank you, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to introduce some students from the Environmental Club and the Site Council at Malibu High School, as well as faculty and another parent. And I wanted to let you know that it is thrilling to see Flow Water stations installed on the Malibu High School campus after more than two years of negotiations and advocacy with the district staff. It's even more thrilling to see how many bottles are being saved from landfills, and I won't steal the kids' thunder because they want to let you know, and how much the students and staff are enjoying the delicious filtered water. And I hope that Malibu High School can serve as a pilot program for the other Malibu elementary schools. They're working toward, you know, the same solution as well as the other district schools. And the overarching goal of the Hydration Team and the parents and students of our school, and we will be delivering a petition with almost 500 signatures that have been gathered over the past two days by students and faculty. And we are hoping that you'll join us in funding these units on our campus and in the shared use areas. There are actually two of the three filtered water stations in the shared use areas. And we have been working with the Parks and Recreation Commission, with Carl Randall, and with Kristin Resco of the staff to, you know, install these units and to hopefully share the cost. The Shark Fund has stepped forward and has put up, you know, the backing for all of this, which allows us now to fundraise. It's, you know, a fairly expensive solution, but filtered water is fabulous, and one of the other parents is going to be talking about how healthy and how clean the water is. So with all of the construction that's going on on our school campus, this is sort of the one bright light, and the students and staff are enjoying filling their bottles and saving all of the plastic from the landfills. So I did want to let you know that the students of the Environmental Club came before the city the grant proposal in 2016, and they were refused. They didn't come away with any money. And at that time, we were looking at LK units, but the district refused to allow us to install LK units on the campus because they would have to take ownership for anything that's attached to the walls of the campus. And the solution that they allowed us to pursue was with a company called Flow Water, where the units are rented and they're hooked up to electric and water, but they're not actually attached to the physical campus. So the district is involved in the negotiation with Flow Water, and they were part of the contract, but we have the responsibility as a school to pay for these on an ongoing basis. And we've already gotten a large donation, $5,000 donation from the class of 2015, and Cornucopia has committed to funding two units for one year. And also, the class of 2018 is working on raising another 5,000. And also, the students have an exciting fundraising idea that they'll be telling you about. And also, Craig Foster has recommended that the Shark Fund add a small donation for water to every donation that comes into our school, which the Shark Fund is really excited about pursuing.
Thank you very much, Mindy. Appreciate that. And the next speaker will be Sarah Ryan. Sally, excuse me. Sally, Lars, and Karina.
Hi, I'm Lars Peterson. I'm a member of the Environmental Club at Malibu High School, and I'm voicing my support for the filtered water stations on behalf of the students of Malibu High School. The great support for the units is shown by the vast consumption of the water. We've saved over 10,000 bottles in over a month with the stations. It's giving students access to clean, safe water, and as well, also giving athletes access to electrolytes. As an athlete myself, I greatly appreciate this because in the past, I've had to spend a lot of money buying specially infused water with electrolytes, but now I have access to it at school. And students are very passionate about this, and myself, as well as a few other students, set up a GoFundMe page to get support for the water and raise money. So on top of that, we're asking for your support to give us a donation and help keep these units of Malibu High School and provide water for all the students. Thanks.
We collected quotes around the school, and we asked people what they thought of the water filtration stations, and a lot of people said really good feedback, which is awesome. I'll read some of them. So Ms. Thorson said, "I love them. We now have our own water cooler for many conversations, and whenever I can chat with students while filling my water bottle, we are so happy to have good, clean, cool water." And when I collected signatures from all the students at Malibu High, a lot of people said they felt safe drinking this water rather than the other water that we have. And yeah, and we're saving a lot of plastic water bottles. And then with the petition around the school, we got over 500 signatures to show their support for the water filtration stations.
Hi, my name is Karina Marazzi, and I'm a junior at Malibu High School and a student representative on the school's Site Council. And the Site Council has been in support of the installation of these flow water units for the past two years, and it's so great that we finally have got them around our campus. In order to keep having clean, filtered water available to students, we have planned to set up a, or we have set up a GoFundMe that any students or parents or, you know, members of the city are able to go and donate directly to the Shark Fund to keep these flow water units on our campus. The students have so greatly appreciated how we now have easy access to clean, filtered water, not only around campus during the day for students, but also to athletes after school. There's one by our pool and by the football and baseball fields. So we hope that you'll support us in funding these through our GoFundMe or by giving money to the school to keep these filtered water stations. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Appreciate the three of you coming down here and partaking in American democracy. And thanks for your efforts with the flow water. And I think we have Jen and Sarah Ryan still to speak.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Ryan, and I was a teacher at Malibu High School for sixteen and a half years, had Councilmember Rosenthal's sons. They're awesome. And anyway, I have moved into the library position two years ago, and when I did that, I had had an Arrowhead water container in my classroom for about six years. That was an honesty policy kind of thing because no kids at school would use the water fountains. It just, whether it's safe or not is irrelevant. It didn't taste good, and it wasn't cold. And so the kids weren't doing it, which meant, and I've been the advisor for the Environmental Club, excuse me, for a long time, and it really was upsetting to see all the plastic bottles being used. That's why I had the Arrowhead thing in my room to try to get the kids to use reusable bottles. And when I moved to the library, it wasn't feasible, and so we had to take another, try something different. And this is where we've come up with the flow water stations, which have been so popular. People are so happy at our school. And I thought maybe I could read you a couple faculty comments. This is from Julia Cheryhooz, who teaches eighth grade history. "Kids love them. I see them filling up water bottles all the time. I have also seen a dramatic drop in the number of plastic bottles in the recycling bin in my classroom. I know that our student athletes and their coaches in particular appreciate filling up on cold, clean water before they head off to their games." Jennifer Gonzalez said, "I see so many more reusable water containers around campus. Students and teachers alike line up at passing periods to fill up. It is a community space where we are all improving our health and our environment. Thank you to all who have worked so hard to get the flow water stations." Rich Lawson, who's a PE teacher for a long time, "The water stations are the best addition to the school campus and general population that we have had in many, many years. With many of the health challenges that we have to deal with on our campus, the clean water is a step in the direction of promoting wellness. A big thank you to the folks who worked on this project. Get your bottles ready for a healthy beverage." And Lori Morgan, who has worked at our school the longest, if people know her. We do this every once in a while with the faculty, like at the beginning of the year, cutesy games or whatever. Who's been here the longest? And it's Lori Morgan. And she works in the attendance office, and she said, "Finally, clean water to drink. The water from our regular fountain starts to grow mold in three days. Haven't had a drink from them in 35 years. At last, I can drink the water at Malibu High School." Fantastic. So, and there are many, many more that I could give you and you could see, but the staff has been overwhelming in their support for this, and we're doing our best. I feel like we're those, like as a teacher, it's always like that cliche about whatever. You know, we give tons of money to the military, but teachers have to hold bake sales. And that's sort of what I feel like we're doing here, kind of holding a bake sale, asking you for help in this so that we don't have to take away something that has brought so much happiness, but also health, and... And that's it. Thank you so much. I will not take up more of your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Jen, you're next.
Oh, yeah, this is the packet. You can just give it to... Thank you, everybody. I think they've said it really well. I'm going to add to it that this is what we're asking, because, you know, we always got to come and say, "Why are we here?" Because this is great. The kids love it. It's, you know, with all the environmental work that we've done on the campus and the, you know, state of construction it is that's going on, and there are crazy heat waves that we've had in the beginning of the year, they were handing out bottles. The construction staff was grabbing water because they didn't have clean, cold water to drink. So that is completely solved with the flow water. It's too bad we couldn't get it in October when we needed it, but they weren't quite ready yet. So, and you guys know how hard it is to work with the district. And to just get, even after this was approved, and Dr. Drouadi promised me last June that he would get this installed, it took him another six months to get the team in place to go ahead and follow his direction. So here's what I want to tell you about Flow Water. We put two of them, one of them outside the pool, so that the public, so for public use, they can use it all weekend long. We didn't strap it down and, you know, lock it up for just the school. There's also another one in the old gym, and I was just meeting, every Sunday morning, there's a group of guys from Malibu that play basketball in the gym, and I ran into, you know who they are. And I ran into them on Sunday morning, and they basically, they're like, "Oh, my God, that is the best water ever. We need to have that at ABC Studios," was one of the places, one of the guys that was playing. So our community is enjoying this as well. And what we're asking for is the city to pay for two of the units, the ones that are in the public use, not the ones that are going to be down by the school, so that our community can use it. And we're asking, how do we go about doing that? We originally had an agreement from Kristin, is it Resco? I don't have my glasses on. I apologize. I wrote too little, the recreation manager. And then we switched to the Flow Water because it's the only thing the district allowed us to put in. So we figured, you know, better something than nothing. And we can't seem to get her to follow through with that. So we're asking you to figure out how to go about doing this so that we can keep two of them in the recreation areas for all of Malibu use. Our students will use it during the week, and then it'll be a, you know, something for the entire community. So whether it's, if you guys can figure out whether it's something you guys need to approve, or we go through a grant, or we can just go through, because I think Parks and Rec should be able to approve this without going through a grant or anything, whatever you guys can do to help us with this so we can make sure that they stay on our campus. We have until April 5th. That's our three-month trial period, and we have to make that, you know, that commitment going forward. So if you guys can do something about that. The last thing, while I have 15 seconds, you know, they asked for the city, the school district asked for the city to get a team together about emergencies so that our school is ready. And you guys have so much influence on the community and know so many people. If you guys can find the right group of people to be on this team to make sure that we have, you know, the best minds working together for, God forbid, that there's an issue, that would be really great, and just get ahold of the principal. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Jen, and thank all of you for coming down and sharing your comments about the water, which is the stuff of life. And I think it's actually very commendable that you've taken such a simple thing, which is water, and emphasized it in everybody's life, and at the same time, cleaning up, you know, the plastic trash and stuff like that. Thank you very much for coming down. I don't think we have any other comments. Norm? No comments? Okay, all right. Then we're on to the consent calendar. Oh, excuse me, city manager report. Sorry about that.
Good evening. Just a few things to report. I wanted to announce that we will be going live with our new website on March 1st. When we did our newer previous website a few years ago, it included an upgrade periodically, software changes and technology changes. And so we will be launching the new website on March 1st, and I hope people will enjoy what it looks like. I think it'll be much more user-friendly and be able to find information very easily on it. And then I also wanted to let everybody know that we graduated our most recent CERT team. We had 26 people participate in the training classes to become a CERT, a member of CERT, and their drill graduation was held this past weekend. And give a big thank you to the existing CERT team, the prior members who assisted with that, and also to Station 88, who helped get that all together. And that concludes my remark.
Thank you very much. So now, do I have any commentary from any of the council members?
Sure.
Lou, you got it.
Where are, where is the city as far as this water situation is concerned?
So city staff was approached by folks out at the school after the water fountains or dispensers were installed, and we were asked to pay for the ongoing maintenance. And we worked with the district to see if that was something that could be covered under our joint use agreement. And it is not, unfortunately, something that can be paid through under the joint use agreement. And so what staff responded with, that this would be something that could be applied for under our general fund grant program. The applications are currently open. They're due on March 30th. But at this point, the city doesn't have any funding, and the fillers were installed, you know, prior to any discussion with the city about the city coming in to pay for it. So it's not something that was included in the current budget. So the general fund grant program would be the most appropriate way to go about that.
Okay, so you guys know how to do that. You did a grant once before. I do remember that. And so get it in as soon as you can, obviously. And let them know that, you know, you obviously have a date that you need it by, because I know some of it doesn't happen until the following fiscal year, but maybe, you know, we can work something out. We'll see.
March 30.
Sure. You want to say something?
This was the reason I wasn't sure about the grant was, I mean, I guess you can do it as a lump sum, but you pay monthly. It's like $99 a month per unit, and that's it. So it's like, what, does that make it like 1,200-ish? Yeah, with tax, whatever, you know, sales taxes. So it's really, it's really reasonable, and it's a five-year commitment, and it's $99 a month, so... And it could be paid monthly, so it's not like you have to come up with a huge, you know, group of money right away.
Well, if you do it through the Shark Fund, we can give them a lump sum, and they can just pay it out over time.
Do it that way, so go back to the grant?
Yeah.
Okay, you got it. Thanks.
Yeah, the best way to go about this is to put all the information, it has to go in through the formal application process. So I'm glad you provided us to it for it tonight, but we do need it in the application.
Absolutely. I will put it through the process, but I did want to let you know the budget is inside the packet that we dropped off.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And we'll review that.
All right, getting on to other things. I attended an LA County Commission on Alcohol and Other Drugs meeting in Alhambra. And Rick and Riva and I met with Jeanette Ching from Senator Dianne Feinstein's office, and we covered a lot of subjects. I spoke to her about sober living issues, and Rick talked to her about a couple of things. I'm sure he'll tell you about that. Riva and I attended a California Contract City Association Board of Directors meeting in Downey, a tour of Los Angeles County. And Laura Riva and I attended a press conference at Will Rogers State Beach for a PCH Task Force grant with Senator Henry Stern and Assembly Member Richard Bloom. And yesterday, Laura and I attended a march from Zuma Beach to the high school that was completely led by students from local schools. And after the Parkland, Florida mass shooting, our high school students became involved in part of this national movement demanding legislation on gun control. And there were eloquent speakers on this subject, and this movement's not going away. And our generation has not been able to stop these horrible mass murders and shootings. Maybe this next generation can. I think they'll be more successful than we were, and I personally think that I can do everything in my power to help them. And now for some more of our news. Assembly Bill 3162, as our bill on reforming licensed rehab facilities in residential neighborhoods, was introduced by Assembly Member Laura Friedman from Glendale, and it's co-authored by Senator Ben Allen and Senator Henry Stern, and also Assembly Member Sharon Quirk-Silver. by Senator Ben Allen and Senator Henry Stern, and also Assembly Member Sharon Quirk-Silver. And as you know, this bill is something we've been working on for a very long time, and this year, we're going to pass it. But I really need your help, everyone out there who's watching this. I really need to send an email or a letter to some of these people that are supporting this. You can send it to me, and I'll make sure they get it. But we really need to show them how deep the support is for this. So, anything you've got, send it to the city council, they'll get it to me. But this is, this is the one that we've been waiting for, for a long time, and this will solve an awful lot of our problems. And that's what I got for the moment.
Thank you, Lou. Laura?
Welcome, everyone. Here, we're getting rain tonight, so keep your fingers crossed. I just wanted to, I'm sorry, the kids left and Mindy left already. I have some, some thoughts about the, the water issue. I know that, and maybe it won't work, because the water refill stations that we have in our city, I know I had contacted, and the city as well, contacted the school and the school district, because they actually give out grants for the bottle-filling stations, West Basin does. And so, at least for the inside ones, I don't know if they make outside ones, they were willing to pay $5,000 worth of grants for the inside stations. Now, maybe they don't go along with what the school district wants, but there's no, you don't have to upkeep, and you just pay for them. And it's through West Basin, and I don't know if there's any money anymore for them, but I had contacted the school and the district, and our staff had done the same thing. So, I have to say, I'm disappointed that then we're being asked to pay for different kinds of stations that, that you have to pay for on an ongoing basis. So, I think somebody somewhere dropped the ball on that. I'm, I'm not saying, I'm sure it wasn't the teachers or...
There was no indoor locations with water access.
Well, I mean, when I mean indoor, I just mean, you know, like in, underneath, you know, air.
They wouldn't do it. The district wouldn't do it.
So, well, so, and these were the ones from West Basin they wouldn't do? They, so you worked with West Basin on, okay. Well, then that's too bad. So, I think for, for myself, we, we're actually pretty lucky in Malibu. We have pretty good water here. So, I guess what I would want to see is the water testing that's been done to show that the water is unhealthy at the high school, and that if it's the fountains, and I know this came up a few years ago, how much it would cost to replace the water fountains and the cooling system, because that would, at least to me, seem like a more, with a bottle-filling part of it, that seems to me more of a permanent solution, rather than having to pay every single month, and then I know you need filters and things like that, that I think for, really, if you want to be sustainable, to be financially and environmentally, to look into that. So, those were just some ideas that, that I came, came up with, and I know I've seen some of the other emails from, from Mindy about this. And I think it's important to know that, that, that our staff, our Parks and Rec staff, as well as our Parks and Rec Commission, had made no promises about money, but that they were trying to work and see if this could be done through the shared-use agreement, and it, and it didn't come through with that. So, I think that those are the kinds of things, I think you should apply for a grant, but this is, these are expensive units. Every year, when you, well, each unit, and you have five units, so that, or three units, so that's with the filter, I mean, that's $3,500 a year. And, and then I know, you know, I believe, I can't remember, Mindy had sent out a thing. I, I'm just saying that maybe one of the things to look at is being able to rebuild the, some of the water fountains, so that they do provide what they're supposed to provide, because we actually do have pretty good water in Malibu. It's just a thought and an idea, and something that I feel is more sustainable. That's all. You know, I'm a big supporter of the environmental team, and all of you are, so that was just something that I, that I thought would be important. The, and also, I would talk to West Basin again, and, you know, because they are also the retailer, I mean, one of the wholesalers for the district. And so, the district might allow something that comes from the, I know you're saying no, but you can't, it can't hurt to try again, that comes actually from their own water retailer, wholesaler. So, it's just a thought. So, just some of the other things, Lou mentioned the March Against Gun Violence yesterday, and I know Sarah was there, and Jennifer, and it was very, very deeply affecting. And it just, it was inspiring, it was wonderful, it wa, there were so many different kids. We had elementary school kids, middle school kids, and high school kids talking. One young man wrote an original song, which he performed. Another young man recited a poem that is going around the internet, and actually, I have asked him to come to our, and he has agreed to come to our next city council meeting and perform his poem at the, during public comment. It was very affecting. And then, you know, I just wanted to make sure that I thanked all of these kids, as well as the parents, as well as our volunteers on patrol, that were there handling traffic and people walking across the street, the sheriffs, the organizers, Amon Harrington, who made probably half the signs that were there. And I really encourage people to go on social media and to watch for the papers this week. I think, as Lou said, we're in really good hands with our next generation. I don't think that I could have ever spoken as eloquently and as forcefully and as factually correct when I was their age. So, it was really pretty great. Some of the other things that I've done, I was able to give a commendation at the Navy League luncheon to Beverly Estelle, who's the longtime treasurer of Malibu Navy League, who was retiring after 49 years, or something crazy. And she's really been a wonderful volunteer, so I was honored to be able to give her that commendation from the city. Also, Reeve and I were at a Council of Governments meeting last week, and I also went to something at UCLA called The Future of Cannabis, and it really talked about some of the health issues, some of the environmental issues, and what's going to happen in the state of California, and primarily in the Los Angeles area. I did want to say an early congratulations to the newest Dolphin Award winner on our city council here. I wanted to say congratulations to Lou, so the Dolphin Awards are this Saturday. And so, I'm sure Lou will be perfectly feted and taken care of. And, and people have been congratulating me also, but I, I'm actually just getting a Dolphin certificate. I was lucky enough to get a Dolphin in 2001, when I was in high school. And so, thank you, Norm, for getting that. And so, because Lou and I are, because I'm leaving council, they are giving me a little bye-bye certificate, so, but still very honored to do that. Just wanted to let people know, this Friday is the Business Roundtable at 8:30, and I will also be going to the Southern California Association of Governments meeting this Thursday, because I am our area representative. And I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Skylar?
Sorry, I was talking with the phone mic muted. Wow, I saw some of the coverage from that gun protest. That was pretty remarkable. Kind of that stuff going on around, all around the world. It's very tragic what happened in Florida, and I do hope that this next generation can find some solutions to that. I know it's kind of a larger-scale issue, but I think it's relative to everyone, all, whether you like it or not. But anyways, just wanted to say that in regards to the water stuff that was kind of referenced earlier, you know, I, I would hope that there's got to be some kind of grant through West Basin, you know, to get these things installed, and have something more permanent, that like Laura said, doesn't have a lot of maintenance, where that I know that right now, that the ones that are there do require maintenance, and I'm sure that adds up, and is not always the most environmentally friendly thing. And I also know that we have really good water at the school, so I don't want to, you know, send parents or folks in the community in some sort of a panic over worried about what the quality of the water is, because I believe that we have some of the, the best water in the nation, and I have never been told or shown any science that says otherwise than that. But anyways, I'll keep it short, and I do hope that they come back and apply for that grant, and we can find some funding within the city, or hopefully the, they can go to the, the water district. And that's it.
Thank you, Skylar. Jefferson?
Thank you, Rick. So, I met with the homeowners of the Sarah Retreat, where the president, Jeff Follart, and Ann Payne, and Doug Payne, and a number of other of the homeowners, met us on the bridge at Sarah Retreat, and they discussed their concerns, which will come up later during the presentation, and they'll probably want to address it directly. We also received a letter from them with other information, which we'll share later on. I did go to the MSA meeting, that's the Malibu Surfing Association, on the Tuesday night, and I met with their Board of Directors and about 10 members of the concerned group that are addressing the issues at Third Point, Malibu. And they have got an engineer now, a soils engineer and analysis, and a geologist together, so they're, they're building a case for themselves to help retrieve Third Point. And I think that would be a benefit to everybody, especially since Michael Bloom has now got Malibu Surf Rider Beach on the National Historic Registry. So, moving forward with that, then they took it to the big membership at the, for a vote, and they are willing to adopt a legal position. They've also reached out to Surf Rider Foundation, and they have also opined on it, and feel that there may be some merit in readdressing Third Point sand issues. I took that information with me to the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission, where I'm the appointed member for the City of Malibu in the COG. And I did mention that to the executive board, and a letter may be coming forward from the MSA and the Surf Rider Foundation to the executive board to put it on an agenda item. And then, I also announced that we may be passing this evening, the Plastic Stir Fork Straw Ban, and that met with resounding applause from every member of the Santa Monica Bay Restoration. Everybody was happy to hear that. And my challenge to the rest of the members of the board was to get their communities from Redondo Beach, Hermosa Beach, Manhattan Beach, and the City of Los Angeles, who are all represented there, to look at our ban and take a serious look at it, and see if they can follow through on another level, which would really mean something. Then, that's, I think that's about it. And I look forward to speaking to the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission again in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson. This afternoon, I went to a symposium down in Long Beach, which is organized by UC, excuse me, Davis, let's see, Aviation Noise and Emissions Symposium, which has to do with noise from airplanes, the ongoing noise from airplanes, as I continue to get smart and figure out all the different ways in which we can address the new air traffic over Malibu. I believe, no stone unturned, and I found a bunch of stones to unturn today, and I'm working with a bunch of other people, and we'll continue to move forward, and I get something a little more solid to report. I will, but I'm in communication with Senate, excuse me, Congressman Ted Lieu's office, who has a representative who is keeping us appraised, and they are going to bat for us, which is good, because it's a federal-level thing. And I'm kind of thinking that maybe the Historic Registry of Surf Rider Beach may come into play, now that you mention it, because that was an angle, I guess you could say, that was used in Phoenix with some of their historic neighborhoods, and they were successful in their lawsuit against the FAA by talking about the impact on their historic neighborhood. So, that may help us, strangely enough. There are a couple of fatalities over the last week. One of them was a car that was found at the bottom of Decker Canyon, and that's in my district, where I work at Prior Station 72. I was not working that day, but I did talk to the people who were involved in that. Some hikers were down in the ravine below Decker Canyon and came upon a car with a body in it. The body was of somebody who'd been missing since January 26th. After they told me about everything, as is often the case when we do something like this, we went out to the spot where they did the extrication of the body, and later on, the car, in fact, when we got there, the next day, they were working on getting the car out of there. But when you stand on Decker Canyon and look down into the ravine, you could not see the car. These canyon roads are super dangerous, and if you have young people, or anybody, yourself driving around there, you really, when you drive on these things, especially at nighttime, and especially Decker Canyon, which I refer to as the Widowmaker, because there are some very steep areas with no guardrails or anything, it's very easy to drive off. And that's what happened to this particular individual, and nobody was the wiser. They were reported that he was missing, but, you know, there was evidence that, well, I won't even go into it, but if you can imagine how frightening that must be for someone to go over, and maybe they don't die right away, and they can hear the cars going by. And then, I have to think there's actually a bunch of other cars that are out in some of these canyons. So, a couple nights before that, there was a 16 and 17-year-old that was right next to a cliff that wiped out in their car, and in the middle of the night, and what a 16 and 17-year-old are out doing, driving together on one of these roads, and their car actually wound up upside down, very near another cliff that they didn't go over. So, I can't stress enough, in these instances, everyone needs to just realize how dangerous this area is to drive around. That's my little public safety tip for the day. Thank you very much, Laura, for going to the PCH Task Force meeting for me when I couldn't make it. I appreciate that. I also met with Jeanette Ching from Senator Feinstein's office with Lou, and I want to make a comment about the water thing. I think it's really commendable, no matter how this, whatever solution that you guys come to, I really appreciate all the effort that you've gone to this far. It's not easy dealing with bureaucracy. Imagine what it's like checking on the federal government, trying to get them to change their airplanes. So, I know what you're going through. Yeah, and the district. So, I think that the thing that's really important is you're steering everybody back to the basics, which is good, clean water. And at the same time, you're getting rid of some waste, so I think your efforts are to be commended. Thank you very much for coming down here. Really appreciate it. The more water everybody drinks, and the less everything else we don't drink, the better off we'll be. And that is all I have. And then, we're on to consent calendar. Does anybody have anything they want to pull from the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Caberlal call?
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Peake?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Mullen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Moving right along, we're on to 6A, the Ringe Dam Project update. Do I have a report on that?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Mullen, and distinguished members of Malibu City Council. We'll be doing an update on the Ringe Dam Project. The Ringe Dam Project is in the feasibility phase at this time, and the agency is doing that, is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. The project is formerly named the Malibu Creek Ecosystem Restoration Project. It's formerly known as the Ringe Dam Removal Project. Purpose of the Army Corps is to restore aquatic and riparian habitat, specifically the steelhead south, or Southern California steelhead trout. Their approach is to remove all man-made barriers in Malibu Creek, largest being the Ringe Dam. There's a project and location map here. The Ringe Dam is approximately three miles north of PCH in Malibu Creek, and it, as you can see there to the left side there, Malibu Canyon Road is also... you can see there to the left side there, Malibu Canyon Road is also adjacent to the Ringe Dam and the creek there, and you can see the spillway and the Ringe Dam arch, and the arch is what they're going to be removing, and then also the sediment behind the dam. And that area there, in volume, is about 780,000 cubic yards of sediment behind the dam there. Dam history, it was constructed in 1926, it was used as a water supply reservoir. Unfortunately, it filled quite quickly, filled with sediment in the 1940s, and it was decommissioned in 1967 by the California Department of Water Resources. Thereafter, it was purchased by the California Department of Parks and Rec, and then it was added to the Malibu Creek State Park System. Over to the left side of this picture here is a cross-section of a dam. The dam is about 100 feet tall, and down at the bottom, we have fine silt and clay. In the middle portion there, you have beach and compatible clean sand that they're going to use, try to use for nourishing the beach, and then at the top, you basically have gravel, rocks, cobbles, and boulders. Strategy the Corps is going to use for dam removal is going to be basically haul away approximately 780,000 cubic yards sediment behind the dam. They're going to truck 502,000 of that cubic yards to the landfill, and the remaining portion, they're going to truck to Ventura Harbor. From there, they would load it on barges, and then basically send that to Malibu to nurse beaches. Down below, to the left, is a, basically a barge that they would, kind of barge that they would load it on, send it down, and then to the right there is what they would do, is get the barge, basically park it just offshore there, and then offload the sand on the beach. Proposed haul routes is, now at the lower left, there's location of the Ringe Dam, you can see, and they would be hauling the rock, I mean, the rock, 502,000 cubic yards to landfill at Calabasas, which is just north of that, and then the rest, 287,000, 278,000, it would take, go up Malibu Road, Malibu Canyon Road, up to PCH, or PCH 2101, Iowa 101, to Ventura Harbor there to the left, and then offload it onto the barge, and then back down to, send it back down to the beaches in Malibu. Let's see, next slide. Concerns with that strategy is that it would, with 100,000-plus truckloads, you'd basically be damaging the roadways, you would increase traffic congestion on the roadways, there would be a negative impact to air quality, negative impact to slope stability for the canyon walls. Once you remove, actually remove the dam and the sediments, we don't know what the stability of that, those canyon walls are. Now, we do have Malibu Canyon Road, on that basically canyon, on the canyon walls there, who knows what's going to happen with that? Something, you know, could crumble, who knows? So that would be a negative impact, and then there would be a negative impact on water quality, because there'd be an increased sediments, because that dam is there, it does hold back sediment, so it'd increase the sediments in the water that comes down Malibu Creek. And the most important one that I feel is increased flood risk for the Malibu Civic Center area. Ringe Dam is basically a flood control structure, it's used as a flood control structure. Without that, it would damage, you would have water come down, it would damage Cross Creek Road Bridge, it would have contribute damage to low-lying properties, and then also FEMA regulations, they say they cannot modify the flood zone more than one feet. Well, Army Corps' report does indicate that there would be flooding more than one feet, so you would definitely have flooding there. Currently, the project is in the Army Corps feasibility stage. They're currently seeking approval from the California Coastal Commission for consistency determination. California Commission, California Coastal Commission meeting has been rescheduled to March 9th in Oxnard. In summary, this project will restore eight-and-a-half miles of aquatic riparian habitat in Malibu Creek. It'll also nourish the beach with sand. However, the project will result in damaging roadways, increased traffic congestion, decreased air quality, reduced canyon slope stability, impact water quality, and also increased flood risk. Staff recommendation, we'd like to authorize the city manager to send a letter to the California Coastal Commission, addressing the city's concerns regarding the project, and provide staff with directions on framing the city's position on this project. And with that, that's the end of our presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Have any questions?
I have comments to make.
Yeah, but do you have any questions on the actual report? Laura?
I had a few questions. First, is staff going to the meeting, Coastal Commission meeting, I thought?
We were hoping to get direction on sending a letter. We thought that that would provide us with more time to further, to address all of our concerns. If we speak in public, we can only get a few minutes, and-
But can we do both?
If the council wants us to, we certainly can.
I also, you know, I've been kind of following this for a number of years, and I know there were alternative projects that they thought about, you know, like taking it down over 30 years, or building something to take it, you know, like a pipe way or whatever. So because this is the one that's going forward, does that mean that the other ones were deemed not feasible, inappropriate, or are they still looking at other projects?
No, I think, I think this, or this alternative was what Army Corps calls their preferred plan, or preferred alternative, so this is the best one that they've, they've actually believed it's going to work.
It's just hard to imagine that this is the preferred.
I totally agree with you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Bob?
Just make comments about the project.
Well, we have some public comments here. So I have Matthew Katz, followed by Kate, excuse me, sir, and then you're followed by Jeff Follett.
I only have to introduce myself to the new mayor, Mr. Mullen, Matthew Katz, the rest of the people know me. In commentary, this gentleman, he educated me, I came here to propose, I'm not an advocate of tearing down the dam by any means, but I came here to propose an idea. I am an engineer. I've never engineered a dam. Yes, I did, I built some dams when I was a kid. I grew up at the ocean. As a matter of fact, as a side thought, I have a place in Olympia, Washington, that has 350 feet of waterfront with a concrete bulkhead. I won't go into that now, because I'm here to talk about the dam. I assume that this gentleman is talking about engineers that have thought about the alternative of rather than, he says that he realizes that there are a lot of trucks, about eight years of trucking, and I don't know if they intend to explode the dam or what. I'm not saying I approve of the idea, but in the alternative, the dam could be turned into a bridge. They spend how many millions of dollars to build the bridge for animals to cross the road? Well, that's could be a bridge to have people and animals to cross that creek. And I made a little drawing, I think you people may have it there, that gentlemen or folk would like to see what it looks like. It's a very simple thing, to have the mining equipment cut the concrete rather than blowing up the dam, and the concrete could be cut in such a way that blocks could be made of it, and the blocks then don't have to be hauled away, they could be used along the sides of the creek to prevent further erosion, and the sediment would be taken down gradually by whatever water does come through there. I don't think we'll ever see any steelhead there, by the way, we don't see any, I think we saw one steelhead in the other creek. But I think the idea of cutting the bottom open in a gradual way shows to allow sufficient amount of water to come through to carry the sediment down to the bay, and there's concern about the damage to Surf Rider Beach. Though there could be a construction, a temporary construction for maybe eight or 10 years, to put the sediment collecting and a barge located at that point, and instead of hauling it to Ventura, take the barge over to Broad Beach and spread the sand out there, which I'm sure that every time they put it there, the ocean's going to take it away again anyway. Oh, I grew up at the ocean back east, there was no way that you were going to control the ocean, and I can't imagine any people be naive enough to think that just because you put sand on the beach, it's going to stay there. I've been here since 1955, and the earth has been taken away many times. I used to ride my horses down there, it'd be a large burn one year, the next year, no sand, and that's going to continue to happen. I don't think, is my time up?
Your time is up. Thank you very much, Mr.
Let me just make a side thought. That took about 40 to 60 years to build the Hoover Dam, and the man who originally proposed it never got to build it, but they call it the Hoover Dam. Well, I think it's time, this is another issue, that it's time we go to the governor and start talking about PCH becoming Malibu Main Street, and propose the building of a road across Lateral Canyon like there were no 40 years ago.
Okay, thank you very much, Matthew. I appreciate that. Jeff, you're up.
Mayor Mullen, city council members, friends, city attorney, and Reva, thank you. I come here tonight as president of the Sarah Canyon Property Owners Association, and quickly to explain to you, Sarah Canyon Property Owners Association only is an association of our common shared roadway easements for ingress and egress, and our gate system. And therefore, we are, as an association, primarily focused on the flood risk of the removal of the dam. There are other issues that I have with the project in general, but I want to be clear, and I'm hoping that Christie can perhaps shed some light on this. I talked to Rob DeBeau, who did an excellent job in the staff report, putting this together, and Bob, appreciate your efforts on that. But what the Corps is seeking next week from Friday is their federal consistency determination document from the Coastal Commission, and a consistency determination is a document that describes how a project is fully consistent with the enforceable policies of the California Coastal Management Program. I'm not exactly sure whether or not objections or alternate design methods or any of those things, other than the report itself not having enough scientific evidence or study in certain areas, whether it's for the slope stability analysis of the removal of a dam, what might happen to Malibu Canyon Road, or the sediment that's going to additionally flow down the creek into the lower areas of the creek, impacting certainly our bridge, but also the Civic Center area, or, you know, whether or not it's an analysis of hydrology, which says that it's going to be a foot more, or two feet more, or whatever level above what the current FEMA flood new revised maps say. So I think we really need to focus in and drill down on what exactly is the Coastal Commission proposing to do, because their staff report recommends that they issue this consistency determination document, and I'm very concerned about that. I hope the city will be very strong in its correspondence, I'm sure it will, and I certainly hope that some members of the city staff, or potentially some council people, would be able to go up a week from Friday. If we send a correspondence in, it has to be in by Friday this week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Lou?
Well, I agree, I think we should send someone from staff up there, but I do think we should send this letter as soon as we can. I mean, I have all these same concerns that are in the staff report, and when you talk about floods, you know, we've had a drought for such a long time, people don't remember that during the El Ninos that happened here, that whole shopping center where Warehouse and Pizza Hut and that bookstore, that was before we had chain stores in that area, was underwater, and I remember sloshing around in it, so flood is definitely an issue, and if you're going to take, this was with the Ringe Dam, and it was just one bad El Nino year, I think it was in 80-something, 90-something. Reva can tell you. 98. But flood is a serious concern, and we should definitely be concerned with it.
Laura?
I forgot to ask one question. Is there currently, the last number of years, water in the dam? Is it filled with water?
No, according to Army Corps, they indicate that the back of the dam is completely filled. I'm sure there's ponding water back there. However, for practical purposes, there is, it does not hold water.
I say that because somebody asked me about that, because they had read it, that somebody had said, well, this would be a, you know, this would be good for, you know, fighting fires or something like that, and I didn't think that there had been any water in the dam for a long time. You know, I, we showed the movie Damnation here last year, and it really, the movie really is, talks about not building any more dams and actually getting rid of a lot of dams, because of the environmental and ecological impact. But I think that in this case, there are so many other issues that are involved, that I can't support it the way I might have if it was easy, it wasn't going to have all these other impacts that we knew a lot more about it. It was easy to get to, it wasn't going to affect areas that are already built up. In my mind, there are just too many questions and a lot of fears over this, and actually, when they talk about some of the effects of climate change, flooding, there is going to be an increase in flooding, because we're going to get about the same amount of rain every year, but instead of it being spread out over months, and maybe having 30 separate days of rain, we're probably going to have it in five or six days, and so there'll be a lot more flooding, and so I think that that's a really big concern. So I would echo what Lou said, and I'd like to see staff be able to go, not only send a very strongly worded letter, but also go and take our three minutes and be available for questions, too.
Thank you, Laura. Skylar?
I, you know, I think that we got to, we really have to have a very clear understanding of how this is going to affect the flood district. I'm in favor of sending a letter and sending probably maybe some of even our public work staff to really understand what goes on as well. You know, I have some concerns that ultimately are where does the debris and the sediment end up, you know, after kind of what just went on up in Montecito. I know that it's a little bit different, you know, here in the dam removal, but I think the concern that I hear from people that live in the immediate area is what's going to happen with the sediment flow, and how's that going to change? And if you're telling us that it's going to affect the flood district, ultimately, what does that mean? A couple residents in the community have expressed some concern to me, referencing some flooding that went on in the '70s and the early '80s, and we haven't experienced that kind of flooding in the city in a very long time, and if that flood district were to change, I think there's some real serious concerns about that. So I would like to have a better understanding of that, and that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Jefferson?
Thank you, Rick. I've been following this project, and I actually met with Ron Ringe before his passing on three occasions, and we did discuss the project. It's been on the books for many years. The impetus for the project, of course, is the State Park's position that because of a failure, they may be impacted by many lawsuits. When the whole thing comes down, and if the dam fails, all that material would come down in one or two occasions. So they teamed up with ACE, and that's why we have it in front of us now. Part of the impacts which have been failed to mention, which I'd like to have Bob or somebody on staff look up, which does affect us downstream, is the Porter-Cologne Act. You know, Christie knows about that act. The Porter-Cologne Act, which discusses in detail the deficiencies in a project like this at a federal level. So we may have to come forward with that as part of- So we may have to come forward with that as part of our position letter. Also, if you could go back, Bob, to one of the drawings where you had the dam on the left side and the fill behind it, I think it was the second or third one in. Okay, hold there. Thanks, Bob. So if we look at this detailed analysis, this actually is not something that would come forward for, that an engineer would look at and say, yeah, that's right. The mixtures that they've described here are not correct because the core samples that were taken didn't go to the bottom of the dam. So I would like to suggest that the position, and I'm sure Mr. Dubois knows what I'm talking about and where I'm headed with this, during compaction and filling of the dam in the 40s and the 50s, we were in a lead-composed environment. So there's going to be a number of contaminants which aren't on the contaminant list, which were suggested by ACE. And those contaminants, I'm going to suggest, the largest one will be lead. There'll also be asbestos and there will also be rubber compounds from deteriorating tires coming down off the canyons, as well as high nitrate levels which have saturated the clay. So this is a hazmat cleanup and there's no other way to look at it. They're looking at it as a get us out of jail if the dam fails, but I look at it as a hazardous material cleanup. And that's how we need to address it. This is much deeper than it goes in a picture like this. So where it says find silt and clay, we know that's saturated with the contaminants of the 40s, 50s and 60s. I hope that could be in our letter of opposition if we choose to go that way and that a number of these factors are also mentioned and I can get back with you in detail because I've been following this so long and not take up the public's time, but I'd like to opine with you directly, if I may make that a part of this objection. In about a half hour of time, I can point out a number of things that you did, you just didn't have time to get to that I can help you with. Thank you.
I have a question. What's our timeline on this whole thing? What do they see? I mean, if everything went smoothly, bureaucratically, when are they conceiving of this taking place?
Yeah, the, this project here would basically start at the earliest 2025.
Okay, thank you. You know, for as long as people have been surfing in Malibu, this dam has been here, right? So removal of the dam, it's kind of unknown, the effect it'll have on the mouth of the river, the composition of that beach, et cetera. And there are a lot of unknowns, you know, it's, so it rains now and it come, and the water goes down Malibu Creek and I assume that most of all that water still makes it all the way to the ocean at this point. I mean, it may act as some, what of a speed buffer, but I think that all the water actually makes it to the ocean. So, but there's so many unknowns here and I, it sounds like their idea is truck all the dirt out, then remove the dam, right?
Well, I think they're, well, excuse me. I think what their plan is to, is to do it at certain levels, let's say the first five feet and they would remove the sediments and then, and then, I guess carve a notch in the dam and then let the, you know, the winter flows go over, waters go over the dam and then the next year, take it down another five feet or so and then carve a, carve another notch in the dam and do it that way.
I can help you with that, too, Bob. So the dismantling of the dam was concurrent with the removal of the soils. So it's a staged event, depending on where the railroad tracks are found and how they're constructed because there's not enough definition. When the dam was constructed in 26, 27, the railroad ties, which were used from the Ringe Railroad, had different angles. And part of the structure is supported, not by proper engineering, but the breakdown of the dam will have to come about based upon the railroad tie discoveries because nobody's done an internal audit of that structure and the cement is not the kind of cement that should have been used at the time that we would use today. So the dismantling takes place in periods. And during those periods, you have the greatest amount of exposure to flooding because the project won't start and stop. It has to start and it has to be completed. It's like when you build a dam, you have to dismantle it just as quickly as if you were to put a dam up. So it has a lot of complications which we'll have to look into detail on. Thanks, Bob.
Okay, thanks. I think, you know, this is one of those dilemmas that, it's a contradiction, I guess. And I think most of the people, it's the mission statement, you know, to look after the natural beauty of Malibu and do things that are consistent with nature, et cetera. It's written throughout our code. And this man-made thing, now, you would think that we would all want it to be removed because, put it back in its natural pristine state, but it's not that simple. There's a lot of problems with it, potential problems. So I think that most of the things that you've identified in your letter, or I mean, in the report, are things that should be addressed in a letter. Maybe something to include would be something like mitigation, you know, physical construction and mitigation measures for the neighborhoods downstream, like in Sur retreat. I mean, I have to imagine that they should be able to tell that if the river is flowing in the rainy season, when it's naturally prone to flooding, that it's going to be coming down with a lot more velocity, et cetera. And maybe that's something which should at least pay lip service to if we're going to write a letter. I see you jamming for your mic. What are you, what are you going to say?
Oh, I was just going to say that I think it's really important for us to emphasize that we don't feel that enough research and studies have been done and that that's something that really needs to be done before they go forward. And I also wanted to just point out, even though I know you know this, that there isn't currently federal funding available for this project. So I do believe we have some time to ask for those studies to be done.
Yeah, I agree. It's a long way, you know, before the fat lady sings, but the fact that they haven't really addressed that, I think, is important because I think that there weren't people living down there in large amounts, I mean, not in large amounts, in any quantity, really hardly at all, one family, when they built this dam. So flooding was probably not as big a problem, you know, so that's something that should be addressed. And it's, all right, that's.
There wasn't any flooding by properties back during that period because it had silted up and it had been accustomed to just allowing the water go through the spillway. What the spillway did was kept escarping from happening. That's why they guided the energy over the spillway, which you can see in the picture. The only structures that were downstream at the time, when the dam finally filled up, was Vicaro Hill and they'd moved everybody off Vicaro Hill. That was part of the Adamson House where the workers of the farm and the property stayed. So all that stuff wisely was taken out of the way because they figured out real early that the dam wasn't working. So this is a long and complicated project.
So are you comfortable putting together a letter between now and Friday with the items that you've mentioned in your staff report?
Yes, we had already had a letter drafted for the prior Coastal Commission hearing that got postponed. So we can certainly refine it now that we've had some direction from the council. We had drafted it with the staff concerns, but we'll certainly include all of these as well.
Do we need a vote on that?
I'll make a motion to send the letter.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Mullen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're on to six. Bravo. Bob, you got it.
Good evening again, Mayor Mullen and distinguished members of Malibu City Council. I am before you is a request to pursue a grant from the Mobile Source Air Reduction Review Committee, or also known as MSRC. In general, the grant fund can provide up to $50,000 of funding towards our electric vehicle charging station project on Civic Center Way and at Bluffs Park. Eligibility to receive the MSRC funding requires the following: a resolution acknowledging receipt of the MSRC Clean Transportation Presentation, which we're going to do in a few minutes; authorization of EV charger project on September 25th, 2017; city council authorized staff to pursue, authorized staff to purchase and install six EV chargers on Malibu, I mean, on Civic Center Way and two chargers at Bluffs Park. Next would be requirement would be to allocate matching funds for the EV charger project. On February 12th, 2018, city council authorized $50,000 to be used as matching funds for the EV charger project. And the last item we have to meet is enter into an agreement with MSRC for the grant funds. And if council elects to approve the, approve Resolution 1809, tonight's staff will immediately apply for the MSRC grant fund. At this time, as a requirement of the MSRC grant, staff will present the MSRC's Clean Transportation PowerPoint presentation. I'll do that now. Okay. Clean Transportation Funding from MSRC, Local Government Partnership Program, a funding opportunity to improve water or air quality in our community. MSRC, Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Review Committee is also known as MSRC. MSRC was established in, established by the California Legislature in 1990. Sole mission is to invest funds to reduce air pollution generated by mobile sources, for example, cars, trucks, buses, et cetera. The funds are generated by surcharge on motor vehicle registration. The MSRC works closely with the South Coast Air Quality Management District. However, the MSRC is not a regulatory agency. MSRC invests in clean air projects that support South Coast Air Quality Management District objectives and priorities. There are significant air challenges, air quality challenges in our region, according to the South Coast Air QMD. South Coast region is extreme non-attainment for ozone. Ozone causes respiratory ailments and is a primary component of smog. There's, mandatory air pollution reductions are needed now. NOX is a precursor to ozone or smog formation. From today's levels, NOX emissions need to be reduced 45% by 2023. That's only a few years away. How do we reduce NOX emissions by 45%? By implementing the clean air measures outlined in the South Coast Area AQMD's 2006 Air Quality Management Plan, also known as AQMP. AQMP is a roadmap for how to meet our mandated air obligations. MSRC is partnering with the South Coast AQMD and wants to partner with our, our community. To implement high priority AQMP strategies, AQMP includes traditional regulatory measure, regulatory measures and incentive-based strategies, incentive-based programs will accelerate the introduction of key AQMP technologies, including zero and non-zero emission vehicles. MSRC has reserved incentive fundings for our jurisdiction under the Local Government Partnership Program. This is a great opportunity to receive funding to implement projects in our jurisdiction and our jurisdiction needs to be part of the clean air future. Participation is 100%. Funding is already reserved for our jurisdiction. Please ask our staff to work with the MSRC to develop projects that jumpstart implementation of the AQMP and help improve air quality for all residents. And that's the end of, into the presentation. And our Public Works Superintendent, Arthur Alajajan, and myself, we're here to answer any questions you may have about the project or the program.
I think this is within our sustainability mission, so I'd like to make a motion to move the staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Mayor Mullen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for that presentation, gentlemen. We're on to item 6C for Charlie. Jesse, I think you have the mic.
Good evening, Mayor Mullen, Mayor Potem Wagner, members of city council. The item before you tonight is regarding large-scale special events at city parks and facilities. To give you a little bit of a background on this, the Community Services Department regularly receives requests for special events throughout the year from private individuals and groups to host special events at parks. Most of those requests for special events are actually, do actually take place at Malibu Bluffs Park because it's the only park that can hold any sizable number of people outside here at city hall, outside of here at city hall, city hall, excuse me, with some of the larger ones, including corporate picnics, Ride to the Flags. And then more recently, we've started to receive requests for large events that feature music. While that, it wouldn't take place this year, there are talks of potentially trying to do a multi-day event in future years. And so to give you a little bit of background on what special events, what we consider large-scale special events are, anything over 150 people because of the way it impacts parking and the usability of the park. And then special events that might require food trucks, temporary trash cans or temporary restrooms also factor in the decision to what makes an event a large special event in our eyes. When that happens, a large special event will generally be shot up to the planning department for what we call a temporary use permit. And temporary use permits detail things such as a traffic plan, where you plan to park people, do we need shuttles? And those are, those are requested generally about 60, 40 to 60 days in advance so that we have time to notice the public in, in the event that an event is going to go. So to give you a breakdown on what we have planned for 2018 so far, at least tentatively booked, we have the Chumash Day Event at Bluffs Park, which is a city event, and that will take place on April 14th and 15th. I had noted in the council report that it was the 8th and 9th, but Kristin promptly corrected me that I was wrong on that, that we have a Cheesecake Factory corporate picnic that'll take place in August. And then Ride to the Flags will be back again on September 8th. So with those events in 2018, it flips year to year, but that, this year, we have three events planned. Next year, we will actually have five events planned. The Concert on the Bluffs is expected to return in 2019 and then the Malibu Presbyterian Easter Service draws several hundred people. So that's another large event. So considering that Bluffs Park already hosts three to five large-scale special events each year, and then we're starting to receive additional requests for special events with anywhere from 1,000 to 2,000 people, the one that I described in the report is our most recent one. And we've had two requests similar to that this year where we would actually have music at least one day, but potentially growing to two in future years and having other things like vendors and other details, which I'm sure there's probably a couple people during public comment that will, will give you some more details on that. We wanted to bring it before you to get your feedback on permitting these types of events. Staff does have concerns about that size of an event, similar to Concert on the Bluffs, for example, considering some of the other issues we've heard with Ride to the Flags last year and just the general usage of the park, traffic, the amount, the residents of Malibu being impacted that live either in the surrounding area or that might drive through. So our hope is that you'll discuss the impacts of large-scale special events and then provide direction to staff on developing a potential large-scale event policy. So I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you for that. I'm assuming that most of these events requests, even for future years, are focused on the summer months?
Yes, and the reason for that and why it's unique to Malibu is that we don't have lights. So they need as much daylight as possible when we get to events like that, if they're not taking place during the day. I know that's not an issue for Ride to the Flags, for example, which takes place at 11. I know that's not an issue for Ride to the Flags, for example, which takes place at 11:00 AM or noon. It's, it's a middle day thing, but, you know, some events want to go later and we routinely have to tell people, you have to, you have to be done by sunset. That's when the park technically closes. So, yes, summer months are the more popular ones.
Okay, thanks. Do I have any questions for Jesse? Go.
When the, some of the ones that we do, like the Cheesecake Factory picnic, is the whole, do they take the whole park? I mean, is the park closed to, if I wanted to go take my dog there for a walk, would I be able to do that still?
You would. The, it's, it's not set defined what specifically constitutes a general park reservation versus a special event. But the way we look at it is, and the reason we use 150 people, for example, is that there's 75 parking spaces in the parking lot there at Bluffs. So, once that's full, assuming with 150 people, that two people came per car, that fills the parking lot, right? So, when you start looking at parking down the street, that's where we start, but the Cheesecake Factory one would have somewhere between 300 and 400 people. So, that starts to really affect general usage with parking and, and things like that. So, you could still come there and walk your dog if you could find parking, but it just depends on the event and how it goes. If you've been out there, I think most of you have on Concert on the Bluffs days, you're not getting anywhere near the park without taking a shuttle over and it's not a come walk your dog kind of thing. So, just depends on the event.
And my other question is, the fees that we charge for this, are they, you know, sufficient enough to be able to be used in beneficial ways for the city, like scholarships for our basketball programs or, I mean, in other words, what, what's the upside, at least financially?
Um, it, again, varies on the event. Ride to the Flags isn't, it's, it's a big event that we have set up for, and I'm using them as an example because they're a very large event that takes place that, that, that uses the park. But that, it just depends on how much setup and breakdown we have tied into the actual day of event. An event such as, you know, the one I discussed in the report would be, it would be a lot because you would have a couple days of setup leading up to it. It's at a lower rate, but there is still an hourly rate for that. There are fees, such as staffing, and then having the event on the day of would be a significant amount of hours. So, I would guess in the several thousand dollars, maybe over $10,000 range at least for that one event. So, you know, the Cheesecake Factory picnic, for example, is out there for four hours, so it's not going to make or break the city. But in a bigger event like this could potentially assist a lot.
Christie, can I ask you just to weigh in a little bit about whether we can or cannot make money on something like this in terms of fees and whatnot?
Taking out our facilities, we can charge whatever it takes to, the market will bear, basically. We, we, what you're thinking of is we have limits when we process applications, so the fee we charge to process an application can only be the amount that it reasonably costs us to process it. But to rent our park space, we can charge, and that can be a profit center.
So, it, we, it's fair that we can charge market value? Sorry for chiming in from outer space. Christie?
Yes.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, sorry, couldn't hear you. So, Laura, were you finished?
Yes.
Yes, she's finished.
Okay. I just, I, we haven't had a public comment yet, have we?
That is correct. We have not had public comment yet.
All right, well, let's do that and then I'll ask questions.
Okay. First speaker, Matt Diamond. Matt will be followed by Carol Casey, and Carol will be followed by Adam O'Rourke and Dave O'Rourke, and then Brett Crane.
Good evening, Council, Christie, Lou, Laura, Rick. Congratulations. Jefferson, Skylar, hope you're getting waves for us, Riva, and Jesse, Kristen, Heather. Congratulations on the plastic, that is so huge. I go around Sun Life every day, no top, no straw, no top, no straw. So, you guys make me so happy in that. Malibu is the most beautiful stretch on earth. You guys know this. It's mission statement to preserve the natural beauty. Native Malibu is our community event. It's Malibu. It's our annual event we will do, supporting wellness, philanthropy, environmental causes, the arts, music, and local brands. We are Malibu, 37 years. You guys are making me nervous, this is so real. Love you, Rick. Look at my hands shaking.
You're doing great.
I live this. This is my whole life in the making, and this community is my life. And I live and breathe environmentalism and philanthropy. Started Guitar Festival with another great team, supporting great causes, raising a lot of money. That's what I live for, is to support causes, mimic nature's natural beauty, the venues the headlining act, the venues the headlining act, and the Bluffs is so beautiful. So, zero footprint, our productions are zero footprint. We walk away with the venue better than we found it. Safety is number one, always. I grew up as a lifeguard, all my friends are firemen, police officers, Jefferson, we all know safety's number one. We've done a great job with Guitar Fest. The community wants this. I mean, everyone we talk to really believes in this and it's pure and it's to support Malibu and great causes and set a platform for the world that, you know, we believe in environmentalism and philanthropy and to turn everybody into a philanthropist and environmentalist just by showing up at our events. And I'm very passionate, I've been working with Jesse and these guys for a year on this. I've met with Riva, everybody here, I've showed you. Sorry, Laura, Lou, you haven't seen this yet, but I'm happy to email you guys the, the deck of this. So, Planning Commission, everyone knows about this. This is what we do. We produce events and, and I don't see anybody more capable, willing to do this than us and better keep it Malibu local. The Cheesecake Factory, that's great, but it has nothing to do with Malibu, not to be a glass half-full, but we need to support all this good stuff. And happy to answer any questions for you guys.
Do you see your event, is it one day or a multi-day thing?
Well, we talked, I mean, ultimately, to put that type of production together, it makes sense to be at least two days. But working with Parks and Rec, we said, oh, let's try it for one day. We might take a hit financially as far as like, you know, the ergonomics of it, but we'll do that for the first one to prove ourselves. We'll work with you guys because we're going for longevity.
Yeah, if you could email all of us the, your information, that would, that would be helpful.
100%.
You achieved any kind of 501(c)(3) status or anything like that, or do you have parts of your project that can have that ability in it?
100%. I mean, my dream is, is like Peace, Love and Happiness Foundation presents, is, I like the idea of having a bigger org present and then it trickles down to the smaller orgs. But even if like we do with Guitar Fest, we're LLC and it trickles down to like three or four local and international 501(c)(3). So, that usually works fine. We've done with Guitar Fest. If I had to incorporate this one into a 501(c)(3), it'd happily, happily do so.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. And next up is Carol.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, I want him over.
I'm Carol Casey, and Matt asked me to speak tonight. I didn't come prepared with a speech. This is sort of a new project that he introduced to me. I'm a local resident, I'm also a musician, I also work here in the community, and I'm here to support Matt Diamond. I've seen the ideas that he has, the things that he's produced. I know he's a lifetime Malibu resident. He's very motivated, he's very visionary, and I think that he could put together something that would be really, really good for the community. And as an artist and a musician, I would love to be a part of that. I think that we are an artsy community and we should support that, and we should continue to have that growth here in Malibu. So, I'm here to support that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Carol. And Adam O'Rourke, you are next. And Adam will be followed by Dave, so Dave, you might as well come up to the front, and then Brett, you're after Dave, so.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. Just here to voice my support for the music festival that Matt has presented. You know, growing up in my life, music was my first best friend and my first passion, and I've been a musician my whole life. And when I was young, there were so many different places to play music and see bands in Malibu. And that generally isn't the case anymore, and that's kind of sad because music has been the most positive influence throughout my whole life, and it's given me a path that I don't necessarily know I would be on had I not seen live music when I was a young kid. And I think that Malibu should participate in that tradition as much as possible as presenting music, the way I see it, to young kids who don't necessarily identify with team sports or other things, that they could come out and experience what live music is and maybe find a path that they wouldn't have taken. I mean, when I was in high school, there was dozens of local bands throughout Malibu. I mean, Simon Dawes, White Stripes, Backbone, there was live music brimming out of the town, and I haven't seen much of that anymore. And I think it's a, a lot to do with the Malibu Inn turning into Casa Escobar, which is delicious. But I think as much as we can participate in the tradition of live music, Malibu should take part in that. And I don't think that there's anybody on this council whose life has not been changed by music. You look like a huge Drake fan, I can tell. But yeah, so I mean, I think, for me, I'm more passionate about it to give younger kids an avenue to stay locally and see live music. And I think that's, it's powerful stuff, man. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Dave?
Hey, guys. Thanks for having us. I'm here to support Matt and his, his ideas, and you know, this is, this is a great idea and kind of just going to echo what my brother said, you know? We grew up around here, we started playing music, we launched a professional music career right out of this town, and there was a ton of places to see bands, a ton of bands that were around here, and there was a lot of culture for that kind of stuff. And I don't, I feel as, for kids around here now, there's really not a ton of that stuff. And I think that to have more of that in our town would be fantastic, and you know, what a better backdrop than, you know, the Bluffs Park. I mean, absolutely beautiful. And I know the way Matt and the rest of us think about things around here, always about preserving Malibu. I mean, I've, I've lived here for 24 years now. I'm never moving anywhere else. This is where I will live forever. And as long as we can preserve that and add some great stuff and culture to this town, I think that's, that's a positive, and especially for the kids, too. So, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dave. Brett, you're up.
Hi, I'm Brett Crane. First, I just wanted to thank all of you council members for running this town for us, doing a lot behind the scenes, I'm sure. I haven't been to a council meeting in a long time, I think when we were fighting for the charter school for, because we were going to lose Point Dune Marine Science. So, I appreciate that you guys do all your hard work while we're all busy doing our lives here in Malibu. And I would agree that I think, you know, I moved out here, I've lived in Malibu on and off for 20 years. I've moved out here eight years ago with my three kids, raising my kids, and I do really miss, one thing I miss about the city, not much, but is culture, culture and music and art. And so, I support any, any venue, any event that's going to bring music, that's going to bring art to Malibu. Also, a lot of local labels and businesses and companies can't necessarily afford the country mark prices for, for rents and leases and things like that. So, we do kind of have a tradition here in Malibu of people, you know, selling at their homes and having these events. And so, I do think this is a great opportunity for, you know, local labels and designers to get out there, local artists, local musicians. And I know, I've known Matt for years, he's responsible. I know he's going to do a great job, and he really cares about Malibu like all of us. So, I, I'm just here to support him in this event. Thank you.
All right, that ends public comment. Lou?
Well, being a big Drake fan, but actually, you know, since Dave taught my son how to play guitar all these years ago, and I bought a dozen of them since then, I'm more of a Two Cents fan. But Matt, I would appreciate if you sent us the deck because I really don't know exactly what we're talking about, but I do know that we're not just talking about this one event. What you're asking for, or the staff is asking us for, is some kind of guidance on a policy. And I'd love to see something come back to us that kind of, you know, kind of combines all the other, not instructions so much, but as the policies we have for other events and to see if there's a way we can make this happen. And I do, I do know that when we have a cultural arts center, we will have the room to do a lot more of these things, but unfortunately, at the moment, we don't have one of those. So, some sort of a policy that I would love us to see that, you know, you think the staff can live with, and you know, we do already host 15 million people a year. So, you know, somewhere in there, this is, it's got to be considered.
Thank you, Lou. Laura?
First of all, thanks, everyone, for coming out. Adam, do you ever go to masks still at the high school?
It's been a while.
Okay, because I used to go a lot when my kids were there, and my youngest graduated five years ago, but I've actually got to be a judge once, which was kind of crazy, but I really recommend, because there are a lot of really great musicians and great groups and all that, and maybe as we all get older, we just don't see them as often. But you're right, there aren't the, when, when I first moved here, or, and even before that, I used to go to Et Trancas, the place that, and actually, yeah, and saw some great, great acts there. Anyway, I, you know, I, as I think most people know, I'm a big supporter of the arts, and the more we can do, the better. But I think also, I agree with Lou, we're here tonight to develop a policy and to figure out what's best for Malibu. And I think that the more things that we can do to add to arts and culture and things like that, great. And I think that one of the ways that we can actually pay for those kinds of things in our city is to charge for corporate events, things like that, and because the Bluffs is iconic. So, let's see what we can do, and especially something like a, a corporate picnic, because they're not going to use the whole, the whole park, and you can still use it and park across the street or maybe find a parking space there and be able to go to it, especially if it's only for four hours. And I do support things like that because I do know that they provide money for either cultural events or scholarships for our other programs and, and things like that. So, I would like to see something that's reasonable. I know that we don't, we only allow race events and things like that in the non-summer time, so I think that we might want to look at before Labor Day, I mean, before Memorial Day and after Labor Day, because somehow to add to the traffic impacts in this town during the summer, I don't think would be the best idea. I think May, you know, obviously provides a lot of daylight time, so those are just my initial ideas, but I'll listen to my other colleagues.
Thank you, Laura. Skylar?
Yes. I, I don't know, I, I, I feel that, first off, Matt, David and Adam, I appreciate you guys coming. I, I would have to venture, you know, and knowing Matt for a long time and seeing the success of the Guitar Festival that he helped kick off with Doug and those guys, that anything that he's going to put his hands on is probably going to be very successful, and I think it'd be better to have somebody like that coming from within the community that keeps that responsibility and, you know, maybe even working with the Arts Cultural Arts Commission to come up with a, with a really cool event. I would really support that. But looking at sort of how the, the staff deals with the policy and whatnot, first, I think that an event that's open to the public should somehow be categorized differently as, for example, the private corporate event that we're talking about for the Cheesecake Factory. And I think, Laura, I very much hear what you're saying in terms of, that should be some sort of like, you know, a revenue generating source when someone's coming in to rent the park merely to have their corporate event there, or, you know, like the things like when the NFL used to come and do their event there, or if it's getting used for a movie or something like that, where the, the access is potentially, you know, really, you know, the access to that event is limited to the public. I, I think that we should celebrate music and creativity in our community and that having a annual event there, like the, you know, the, the, the event that Catherine and them did with the, the Arts Commission is, is amazing. That really contributes to culture in the community and the arts, you know, in Malibu and worldwide. And I think that Malibu is a focal point to that. We have a lot of extremely talented We have a lot of extremely talented and creative people in our community and they should be able to celebrate that locally. So I would be in favor, maybe not entirely, of expanding the usage. But I think that any event that's of a certain size, the city council should maybe look at, you know, provided that meets whatever the criteria is, that the planning for that be done, you know, extremely far in advance, which I think that, you know, Matt is a promoter here, saying that that's what he needs to do because you can't, you know, just do that 30 days in advance. You've got to do that six months or a year, longer than that in advance. So, I mean, I'm in favor of coming up with some direction to staff, you know, as far as a policy that says, an event that's over a certain size, maybe we look at and, you know, that they, we have to give them the language. Kristi, I don't know what the correct language would be distinguishing from event that's opening to the public or not open to the public, or open to the public with admission fee or not, or how that works. But I'd be curious to hear what everyone else has to say.
Thank you, Skyler. Jefferson?
Yes, thank you. And thanks to all the speakers that came and spoke. I just want to remind you that they still have a battle of the bands. And we do have a number of great groups here, the Malibus. And there's a few of the others that are still managing to make it over to the Canyon Club for their fine listening. So when Matt comes before us, like was mentioned, we're here to kind of formulate some kind of program so that events like this have a process to go through to actually happen. And I think you've heard from the council, for me, I'd like to, you know, just have you, when you send that email to us and to staff, to indicate the couple of the 501(c)(3)'s that would benefit from it directly, what kind of percentage of contribution you would make from ticket sales, a projected budget on something like this, so we can look at it in detail and the staff can opine with some more knowledge. But overall, I think with the six events that were, I think, believe, is that what we're allowed to have, is six events on that property per year? I need clarification. Is it?
Yes, that's, it's allowed six temporary use permits.
Okay. So six TUPs, you have to fit within that guideline, Matt. And I'm sure you'll, you know, reach out to the staff and conduct that.
Jefferson, I already submitted the TUP.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, let me give you a little background on that. I know it was in the report, but just to discuss, six temporary use permits are allowed per non-residential area, I guess, property per year, zone property. So depending on the year, we have anywhere up to five that are already there. So this would be, for example, if it were to go next year, would be the sixth. To clarify a couple other comments, Matt's group has been highlighted and his is highlighted because his is the first one we received in kind of a line here. So Matt and I have talked a little bit. Well, we've met several times before this week, but we were chatting a little bit about it last weekend. I want to clarify that different groups do pay different rates. And that's something that council has already approved. So also unfairly, Cheesecake Factory's corporate picnic is getting highlighted a little bit. And they are completely different events that pay completely different rates, but they are considered large special events for us. And so I wanted to be clear on that, that the different rates do apply to different groups. And so a private corporation versus just an individual or private group are different rates.
Mayor Mellon, I just wanted to add, you know, what we're looking for from guidance and guidance from the council is not specifically with this one event that's been discussed here tonight, but in general, is the council supportive of multiple large-scale events at Bluffs Park that have noise impact or traffic impacts or lighting impacts? And do you want those in the summer? Do you not want those in the summer? And to kind of help staff have some parameters so that we can evaluate requests as they come in. It could also, the policy could include something where event request over a certain size or number of days directly come to the council for approval and that's not approved on the staff limit. So that's the type of feedback we're looking for. And what I would assume is that we would then bring a written policy back to the council for approval, similar to our road race policy that's been approved by council. So that was what we were looking for, but certainly happy to take it in any direction that you all want this evening.
I just think that basically we ought to, you know, consider what the staff can actually cover, just based on how many people they've got there. And they have a much better idea of what it takes to do these events than we do. So I would really love their input on it.
Yeah, I am. The summer weekends are a problem, I would say. And we have to be realistic about the fact that during the summer, on the weekends, we get a lot of traffic. And having a large-scale event on the weekends in the summer is problematic. So I think you have to take that into consideration. I don't know if we can give specific guidance on what you should and shouldn't do, but I think I'm interested in hearing what your considerations are, because you're the ones who have to put this thing on, and what sort of parameters that you would consider doing. I think there's obviously, you know, it's like everything we do here. We've got an odd-shaped town with certain constraints. And we've got some really great areas, but we have limitations on parking. We get hundreds of thousands of people coming down PCH. So there's obviously a need out there. There's great talent in this town. Some of the creative, you know, part of what we're supposed to do here in the city is, and the Cultural Arts Commission, is to release the potential energy and the creative energy of the citizenry in a way that we can celebrate our great town and celebrate Mother Nature. So I think we just have to make sure that we do it within the constraints of everything else that's going on, the physical constraints of the highway, the parking, the visitors, et cetera. So what I would, what I would suggest is that you guys should talk about it and come up with some recommendations and considerations for the city council, rather than have us, at this point, give you specific parameters. I think the realities of the summer weekends between Memorial Day and Labor Day are undeniable. And during the weekdays during the summer, it's not as bad as the weekends. And I know that after Labor Day and before Memorial Day, it can get darn cold on the Bluffs in the evening when the winds are blowing. So I wouldn't say that between Memorial Day and Labor Day is a complete no-no, but the weekends might be, okay? Like a weekday event you could do during the summer. I'm just throwing those out for your consideration. But that's the kind of stuff that I think you should consider and then come back with a recommendation to the council. How's that sound?
It sounds good. And I want to just kind of piggyback onto that. The municipal code was one thing that came up. And it's written in a way that gives us a little bit of flexibility on what to do. I think we're very aware of that. We generally want to bring you something completed and ready to go for your opinion on. The tough part on this one, for example, is that we would most likely permit a one-day event without issue, provided it didn't go late into the night or something like that. It's that, and kind of conflicting to what we had said, we're looking for some overall policy thoughts. But we most likely would not prevent this, permit this event on a multi-day basis. And so we can definitely bring you back recommendations for time, time of year, things like that. I just want to clarify, we definitely, we usually do try to bring that stuff to you completed. This one is a little bit different because it is such a big event that's not city-based.
Well, it's, you know, you're talking about a specific event, but we're really talking about a general policy here. That's really what we're talking about. And, you know, Matt, for his event, should he be approved to do it? And should it happen, you know, he talked about doing it, tried out as a one-dayer this year and maybe consider multi-day in future years. And, you know, my recommendation of not doing it on the weekends in the summer, that should not necessarily harden fast because there may be some particular date of some particular celestial event that coincides with a weekend end that would, you know, mean that it probably should happen on a weekday. But then there's going to have to be extra considerations for that. So I think it's just, you know, it's easier to put things that don't have to be on the weekend during the weekdays. Okay? Laura?
You know, I think that some of the issues with the policy would be, I, you know, not doing on a summer weekend. I think also, I want to make sure, I wasn't aware, I know there's six limit, and that also goes for city property. So, okay, because I just want to make sure that we leave the option for more city-sponsored events. So obviously, when we do Cinna Malibu at night and show a movie, is that included in one of those? If we have 200 kids or families, people that show up, is that one of our TUPs?
Not currently.
Okay.
But there is, there is a, it's a gray line on what requires one and what isn't from a standpoint of the size and things like that. So if it's an event that we feel comfortable doing without issues or without traffic-weighted things that handles parking, we won't do a TUP. On our bigger ones, we just don't feel comfortable not doing one. So you're absolutely right. And that's one of the things we discussed in bringing the item to council is, do we include every event that we have?
Right.
That's four or 500 people, because that is another three or four. And it makes it a much tighter window if you can only have six. And those stretch everywhere from Chew Mash Day to Halloween. So.
So I think when you're looking at this policy, to look at flexibility and that maybe, you know, we put in there something about one-day events could be approved, but if it wants to be more than a one-day event, it has to come to the council or Planning Commission and can be appealed to the, you know, something like that. And I think that, I don't know if we can, Kristi, can we put something in there? Is it kind of legal or ethical, whatever, to say preference to Malibu producers or something like that, people putting it on that? Or is that not allowed?
I mean, we have a limited resource. Obviously, we can't, we have a limited number of days. So we can certainly put some priorities when you have, you know, a competing applications. If we get more applications than we have days to give out, we can come up with a priority system on how we would decide among them. But we can't preclude any others.
So I think, you know, something like that and something that somehow serves the community. And I don't know how you would put that in, either donations to local nonprofits, allowing local residents to participate to whatever it is, whether it's art events or music or something like that, when you're looking at the policy. I think that those would be something that we could then discuss.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do you have enough guidance?
That is enough guidance.
Do we need a vote on this?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're on to item 7A, as in Alpha. Support for Proposition 68 and 69 and opposition to repeal of Senate Bill 1, SB 1. And Laura, you have the mic.
Thank you, Mayor Mellon. I bring this to the council. I would like the city council to support proposition, I'll start with Proposition 68, which is the California Drought Water Parks Climate Coastal Protection and Outdoor Access for All Act of 2008. And it's going to be on the June 5 ballot. And it would fund parks, water, climate and environmental programs. And this was already approved by our state legislature to put it on the ballot. And this brings money for parks all over California, obviously. But every city gets a minimum amount of money. It will support environmental projects. I think you can see in your staff report, I don't need to go through it, all of the different programs that would be supported. So I'm asking for us to join the long list of municipalities, counties and other organizations that support it. And then Proposition 69 will also be on the June 5 ballot. And it's a constitutional amendment to prevent new transportation funds from being diverted for non-transportation. And this is really important to make sure that when, if the state is having some problems, that they don't take money that we have voted on to be used for transportation. And then also opposition to repeal Senate Bill 1, SB 1, that they are, I don't know if they've gathered all the signatures, but the plan is to put that on the November ballot. And that is to repeal the current gas tax increase, of which some of the monies have already been spent. Cities are using them. We have a number of projects here in Malibu that we are planning to use the money that would be allocated to our city. Our whole cog is actually already planning. So I'm asking for opposition to repeal of Senate Bill 1 also.
I'll second the motion and the letter. Did we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to support, to support 68 and 69 and oppose the repeal of Senate Bill 1.
And we have a second. So could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that concludes our business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to motion to adjourn in memory of the 17 souls in Florida.
I'll second that.
We are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait, hang on.
Roll call.
There we go. Mayor Protim Wagner?
Yes.
Who seconded? I'm sorry.
Yes.
You did? Okay. Councilmember Peak?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.